Ladies and gentlemen, it is now ten o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Let's please turn, put your cellphones on silence, please, and we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're gonna have one minor adjustment on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen. Normally, on item five, where we have the approval and appointments of boards and commissions, that's normally done at the first board meeting after the first of the year. So I would like to take that off the agenda for any decisions. There is information in the agenda on that particular item where we've approached some of the board members of those commissions, and they've said that they'd like to serve again, but there's some that haven't, and we probably, or you all probably, will advertise for those positions that are open. So I would like to take that off the agenda for today. Okay? Let's go on. We have the discussion and approval of the claims. Are there any discussion?
We've got minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did get the minutes. Let's do the minutes of December 16th as mail.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And we also have some minutes of December 19th that was not approved. We'll need a motion on those minutes, too.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now, discussion and approval of the claims.
Did we get the detail from the one item under election that the auditor pointed out?
Which one was it?
Repeat the problem.
No, they don't provide a detailed receipt.
So how did the board want to handle that?
Is it appropriate for those sort of claims to be week after week when they don't provide receipts for them to, week after week, be on the claims?
No, it's one separate action. What you have to decide is whether you think there's sufficient documentation that Jerry's and all the devices, pizzas, plans, receipt.
I'd move to approve the claims minus that one.
Okay, is there a second? Oh, second. Now, do you want to pull that one, Matthew, based on the non-detail on that until the detail is provided?
Yes.
But can you get detail provided if they don't offer?
I think I can call.
And get something?
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
Abstain. I didn't look at the.
Well, we have you and I, so that nullifies our, so we need another motion to either approve this or an amendment of the claims or whatever, ladies and gentlemen.
Don't you?
Because the bills have to be paid.
Don't you, yes, folks, qualify and abstain?
No, it fails.
Kind of goes to, it fails.
It fails.
Do we have to word it differently?
You have to make another motion and pay the bill somehow.
Well, my abstention, I wasn't because of the claim from the auditor's office, it's just I didn't go through them, didn't have access, other than I don't believe. Did it come on the, I just got my county mail set up, so maybe it, I know that we need to pay them. I'm gonna move it, but I hope we can get a more, get our process back to where it was before.
Okay, so your motion is to approve the claims as presented?
Yes, we need to pay them as presented.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second the motion. I think the bills need to be paid, ladies and gentlemen. Any discussion?
I think that, I don't think there's a process to go back to, per se, as much as one going forward. That's all I have to say.
Well, what I'm referring to is, you know, are you gonna bring these in sooner? Or, I guess I'm still, we don't have a clear, maybe it is going forward, but we just need to have access to the claims to approve them. That's the bottom.
Would you like to answer?
Sooner than, I mean, even an hour before the meeting, maybe would be nice.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Abstain.
What was your vote, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Aye, okay, they passed. Okay, human resources. Approval of memorandum of personal transactions, I will pass that around for.
Move it.
Signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we have item number four, which is the receive of appointments for several different townships. We have the first one of Danbury, is there a motion?
Move approval of Sherry Simons.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next one is appointment of Liston Township.
Move it.
Second.
Okay. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C is Wolf Creek Township trustee.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item D is the appointment of Banner Township.
Move it.
Second.
Okay. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number six, county treasurers report resolution to evade taxes for J.R. and S.Y.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item B is resolution to evade taxes for S.S.
Move it.
Second.
Those, discussion. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item C is approval of resolution to evade taxes for W.B.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion.
These are all mobile homes?
Yes, these are building on leased land. Those in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item seven, approval of suspension for C.J.
Move it.
Second.
Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item B is approval of resolution to notes of property sale.
Move it, set the public hearing January 6th, 10:15.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Our next item is the time set item. Mark?
We have some things that we could do before the time.
Please, would you want to come up and give us some information on that?
We have a number of amendments to projects for the Hundred Canyons Alliance grants that need to be approved to allow us time extension. We often file these with the Alliance. It takes longer to develop some of these projects than the 90 days were given after the awards, so it becomes another matter, of course, to do this. The first one we have is approved amendment three to project H.C. 11-1. This is a Dutch Creek tributary on E 54. It's a culvert extension with a drop, and we're requesting that the extension be to December 31st, 2015.
Is there a motion?
Move it.
The second.
Second.
Is there a cost on that, on these projects?
There is, there is a local cost on the projects. They're projects within our construction program already to do them. I don't have the cost shown here in the project brief.
Okay, all right. Those in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Item C, Mark?
The second one is amendment number three to project H.C. 11-6. This is around Street Tributary, structure X 192 on Story Avenue, replacing older reinforced concrete blocks.
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
How much should we get out of Hundred Canyons for these projects?
It varies. What are we looking at in these? These were smaller projects.
Round numbers.
The drop, anyway, was probably the biggest, probably about 40,000. Number one, number two is a complete replacement, that's about 65,000. The last two, you gotta do weird modifications, and they were blown out weird, especially replacement for about 30,000.
Okay. Those in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item, item D.
The next one is a weird modification project. This is H.C. 11-9, below structure G 54.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item D.
And finally, weird modification for H.E., below E 116, same type of project. Yeah, we're looking roughly $160,000 worth of projects here. These are partial cost shares to Hundred Canyons.
You have a motion?
Move on E.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
We did get the, just, I see we still have a couple of.
Yeah, we still.
The City of Bronson project is now open to traffic. We had to make a decision a couple of weeks ago, which we're increasing now, whether we were gonna leave close fall winter or try to open it temporary surfacing. Once we had frosted the ground, it just was not possible to pavement. We looked over excavating the frost, we looked at a number of options. What we decided to go with is to open it with a temporary surfacing on the road. It's been open since last week. This weather is not conducive to good, good travel on gravel roads, however, especially one that's relatively un-nu great. It's, we sent our operator out this morning to try and knock some of the slime off the top, if I have a better word. It's wet and unpleasant to drive in. We'll be, get to the point where we freeze up. I sent out the construction report to Ford yesterday, and described the efforts that have been made there. We put temporary paving in advance of the bridge, this rock from being dragged up on the new bridge, and those will be removed only before the actual paving is finished. We're doing all we can out there to allow those projects to reopen. We have contractors working on three other bridge replacement projects, and only needs a couple of more good days, and we've got a couple more roads open, so. Weather got off of us a little bit here in December, and we were able to make things improve. I can tell you a little bit about the projects that we're letting today. As you know, with the storms that hit us the week of June 15th, we had between 10 and 17 inches of rain dumped in various parts of the county. We had a number of side road slides where the earth and fragments like oil wasn't the saturation of soil, and we've been dealing with traffic control out there for some time to try and keep those roads open, which we've been successful in doing. But getting repairs has been a longer and more drawn-out process. We've had a lot of questions from the public as to why we finished up on some gravel roads, and we haven't done anything to these pavements yet. And the reason for that is, we have two types of roads out there from a funding category. We have federal aid routes, which are more heavily traveled roads, are classified as major collector for a minor arterial throughout the county. We also have our minor collectors and local roads. All of federal aid highways, the major collectors, derive their funding from Federal Highway Administration, even emergency repair dollars. And those repair dollars come through federal highway, they have to come out and look at all of our projects, approve them, and as opposed to FEMA, under which we can do our own work with our own staff and be reimbursed with cost repairs, federal highway requires that, other than emergency protective measures, that we let all those projects contract. First thing we did was we got authorized to let them local, and that's why we're able to do this here today. What that saves us is a planned turn-in period that might begin within 30, 45 days in advance of letting. We're able to go much quicker to be able to let these projects and get them underway here this winter.
So that's a benefit to your department and also to the county as a whole?
Yes. Our staffs worked hard to get as many of the simpler projects together over this, under this umbrella and this project that we're letting today. I do have bid tabulations for you. These are hard to estimate. We're estimating based on our preliminary cost of this, around $300,000 worth of work that we're looking at in repairing slides, and there will be some pavement replacement in this project as well. This will be the first of three projects that we're letting to do the side road repairs. It has been frustrating, the last three of these projects were finally approved just before Thanksgiving, was it, Dan?
Yes.
We got the last three authorizations, and all three of those were in this project. The remaining projects, we're going to have to buy some additional right-of-way, because we have to extend culverts beyond the limits of our road right-of-way now. We have to go through CHIPO, State of Source Preservation Organization, NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act, and we have a number of authorizations that are required before we can move forward with these projects.
CHIPO and NEPA?
Yep, we, we're dealing with a full alphabet soup on these, so. It will take us a bit of time, but we will be continuing to let these through the winter. Some of this work, we won't see done until spring, but we will get it done. One of the reasons that it's been worth going to this effort is we're looking at getting 80 to 85 percent of these dollars back to the county, funded by Federal Highway Administration. Our total damages, we're estimating around $650,000 to $700,000, and that's not money we just got in the bank, so we have to work within the rules and do what we can to move these along as quickly as we can.
Great benefit.
As it turns out, this is as quick as we've been able to get them to use, so.
You've done good work, absolutely.
Some of those slides out there are horrendous.
Right. A lot of our roads were built as they tried to avoid taking a lot of hard ground. Basically, they bought 60 feet either side of center line, and then they made the road fit within that corridor, whether the road bank was five feet high or 35 feet high. So you can imagine, some of these slopes were standing up steeper than a one-to-one. Soil doesn't like that much. Soil that absorbs 10 to 17 inches of rain really doesn't like it.
Absolutely not.
And there'll be some right-of-way fences for farmers that were damaged by our, you know, as soil up our property. We've got some easements to be able to work within private land without being returned back to the farmer, and so these, by far, only were complex enough for the least burdensome projects to get across. And in this case, there's some of the worst slides we've got.
Wow, I imagine so. Well, let's go ahead with bid opening. It's now 10:20, Mark.
The first bid that we have is from Lieber Construction Incorporated. Total bid price, $296,461.65. Two nine six, four six one, sixty five. Our second bid is from KNL Landscaping and Construction of Section 1. Total bid price, $207,699. Two oh seven, six ninety nine. Next one is from L.A. Carlson Contracting Merrill. Total bid price, $338,192.84. Three three eight, one nine two, eighty four. The final bid is from Nelson and Rock Contracting. Total bid price, $260,476. Two six zero, four seven six. We will take the bids out and check them. We'd like to come back.
Okay, right.
In about 25 minutes, and recommend an order in this, so that we can allow those contractors to order the needed supplies and get started as quickly as possible.
Can we have a motion to refer to the engineer for his evaluation and then come back within the next 25 minutes?
Move it.
Okay. Discussion. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Those are good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Our last item for now, anyway, is the, here, if any individual wishing to make a presentation to the board on an item not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
I would like to.
Okay, come right on up, give your name and your topic of discussion.
My name is Roseanne Lindhart-Planck, and my item of discussion would be the one that you took off, number 5D. And today, I come as a member of the bar. I've been an attorney in Sioux City for 18 years. I run the paralegal program at Western Iowa Tech. And my concern, which I had emailed you and spoke to a few people about, is the fact that our judicial magistrate nominating commission consists of six people, of which you appoint four, and many of those people has come to my attention, and members of the bar, that many of them have been on 20, sometimes 30, years. And I think that it would be a good thing if we advertised those positions. I think there's a lot of talented people in the Sioux City that could sit on that commission. I have encouraged people, I know that you've received at least one application, and I wanted to speak today. I may not be able to come back at your next meeting because of my opportunity, because of my jobs, but the other thing that greatly concerns me is I have been through the process. I have met the judicial nominating commission. I've been through an interview, actually two, and it has come to my attention recently through the interview that they had about five weeks ago, that there's quite a process. There's an application form, there's very specific instructions from Lisa McNeil, but then it came to my attention that, and this is not something that is advertised or told to the members who are going to be, to the people who are going to be interviewed by the members, but the commission members are allowing people to come speak to them ahead of time, to go to their homes, to talk to them, to have other people call on their behalf, and that is not told to everybody who is trying out. And I find that that is a little disturbing. I find that that's something that's not really fair, and I feel that if we're gonna have very specific instructions, that that is something that should be told to the candidates, that they can contact the commissioners beforehand and talk to them. I think that creates a look of impropriety, and this is an incredibly important commission. Everybody, this committee, everybody who would like to be a judge has to meet these people, and these people really determine who sits in those chairs upstairs for, for the duration of their careers. And I think it's time that this board is advertised, that people are aware of it. There's one thing that I would pride itself on, and that is merit-based selection of judges, and not every state has that, and we do have that, and this is an integral part of that situation that I think right now is lacking. I think we need to get some fresh faces on that commission, and I think it needs to be a fair process for everybody who goes through it. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, and I'm sure this board will take your comments under advisement, and the other comment about meeting with commission for, some committee prior to, you know, the interviews will certainly be probably looked into and taken care of, so I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, and I would like to know, when will that be placed on the agenda again, and when would I be note, who?
Well, it's going to be placed on at the first meeting of the new board, which will be the second, I believe, of January. The new board has to meet to a point.
I think we did the sixth.
Is that what?
Did you do the sixth? Okay, then I got the wrong date. Well, the sixth of January, and then the commissions will be looked at at that particular point in time, Rose, and then if there's vacancies, then there will be applications, I believe, sent out to the public for, you know, for their, for their, to come back to the board, so.
So you won't have to.
It'll be, it'll, yes, we, I'm, I'm not sure, but that's normally the way that that's, that is handled, when there are vacancies. When there, when we don't get applications, in my past experience, then there are board members, or we ask the general public, would you want to serve on a particular commission? Because there are a number of commissions that was very, very difficult to get persons on, so I would say 90% of the time, those positions are advertised to the general public.
So just to be clear, there are vacancies, and because there are vacancies, now it will be advertised?
Right.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
For clarification, we, I believe we have three appointments. I think we had one person that was interested in continuing it, so there's two vacancies going forward at this point in time, and one application probably.
And will you be interviewing those people, or what is the procedure?
General, I'm not sure what the board would do. Sometimes we do. Sometimes we just look at the.
We get the, we get the application. We look at them, evaluate it, and based on our individual evaluation, then a name is, is put on there, is put out there.
Thank you for answering my questions.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Let's move on to the adjourn this meeting and move to the Orton Slough meeting.
You want to recess?
Oh, recess, I'm sorry, I was just saying adjourned. I won't do it anymore. We will recess and go to the Orton Slough Drainage District Trustees Meeting.
We need Mark Nero.
We're here.
Oh, there he is.
Mark, go ahead.
We sent out a request for proposals to perform work, to develop a set of plans for.
We sent out a request for proposals to perform work, to develop a set of plans ready for bidding on the Orton Slough drainage district. We received three quotes from consultants, INS, B&amp;K, and Sunwest Engineering. All submitted quotations for doing the work and interest in doing it. The work as proposed is to go out and make the current tile system function at its fullest capacity. It was out there, it wasn't in scope of doing an inspection, it was just a brief examination of the drainage district itself back in, I believe it was September. I noticed a number of sections of tile that were damaged. A couple of the intakes that are out there are damaged and not functioning properly. The one on the Grau property in particular is leading to some fairly severe soil erosion damage on this project. This proposal was to engage a consultant, to go out, survey the area, determine the vulnerability of tile that need be replaced, check the main ditch of the Orton Slough, which runs from the railroad crossing structure to the main intake in the middle of Breyett's CRP field, and prepare a set of plans for the board supervisors so that they can let those projects do.
This is going to break your heart, I know it is, but Leo Yocum standing behind you.
Yeah, I know, I saw Leo coming out, so.
He and a group of the landowners would like to create their own drainage district, which means we don't have to deal with it.
Well, that would be, that would be true. And if it's their wish that they not proceed with this work. Again, the direction that we had when the Orton Slough improvement was rejected was to try and make repairs to the current ditch. So we abide by the requests of the landlords and the judgment of their board trustees, which is you folks.
Yeah. Leo, would you want to step up and make your comments, please?
Leo has a new knee and he's getting around really good.
Well, yeah, I visited with Mark. I think I visited with George a little bit about this. About thirteen hundred acres of people that I've talked to right now are in favor of assuming the control of it, you know, through trustees. It would also be probably linked with the farmers' lateral drainage system, the overseen. But I heard you mention Sunwest, that's our engineering choice too.
Great.
I'm glad that some things went on. I'm hoping that within the next month, I'm going to be sending out some letters to all the landlords in that district. The majority of the landlords in that district also are members of the farmers. We have twenty-three hundred acres here, we have fifty-five thousand of farmers, so it's a big difference. We've already met with Roger Rayna and the farmers and just said they wouldn't be opposed to helping oversee it. They're not going to take a while, but they'll help out with, you know, the administration. I guess I just wanted that out in front so that probably what has been done is probably going to be consumed anyway. But we have to get our ducks in the bowl so that we're going to continue what we started. How do we want to do that? Maybe hold off on, I don't know.
I was going to say, so do we, where do we go from here? Then we refer it, we just don't take action?
Well, I think we just don't take action today and I think that we, you allow Mr. Yocum and the group that's forming to work with the engineer's office to develop, you know, your own board of trustees and allow that process to happen.
I think you've got some information, you're going to email me on the process or something. I have another.
Yeah, and you'd also kind of have to stay in London.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right in that information, I guess.
Okay, good. But I can, that's okay, that's how we, obviously that's what we're seeing.
I don't think that there's any action necessary today.
We do have consultants that are sitting there wondering, do I have a job? And there was a substantial difference in the three quotes. Sunwest was much higher than INS. INS, as I recall, was maybe twenty-five hundred dollars. Sunwest was, yeah, I didn't even.
Was he like the nine thousand?
No, it was five digits, it was closer to eleven. I can't remember if it was eleven or eighteen, it was like eleven thousand, eight hundred, eighteen thousand, one hundred.
One was eight, I think.
Well, the Spencer Group has already done some of this.
INS group knows the district well after the work that they had done. And they also had a good understanding of who the projects go to. I mean, if the board wants to defer one or two weeks, that's fine, but if you're going to go much further than that or wait for their board to form, I think the best thing to do is just to reject all quotes and allow them to take their course with the new management of the district.
What were you talking, you and I were talking on this sort of thing.
How long are those courts on the table?
Typically, they will probably want a response within thirty days or less.
So does the board want to defer this item for two weeks until we get additional information back from you, Mark, and also from Mr. Yocum and your group?
We'll defer the judgment on this issue until mid-January.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Second.
Oh, there's a second, oh. Mr. On, seconded motion. Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Leo, you're breaking my heart. Can you work with some others?
Okay, I think that's.
I've got to knock out for the second bid results.
All right. We'll just wait for that.
Mr. Claire, the drainage district meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Go back to our regular meeting then?
You're in recess.
Hope to adjourn.
And there's a second, those in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. For now, in our regular meeting.
You're in recess.
While.
Yeah, you're in recess.
We're in recess. While we're in recess, ladies and gentlemen, this is my last meeting and I just want to say that over the years that I've served as a county board of supervisor, I've really enjoyed the privilege of serving. It's been a great experience. I've worked with a lot of great people on the board of supervisors for thirty years I've been here and also an extremely great group of employees in the county. We have over four hundred employees, I believe it is, in various areas. They provide services to a wide spectrum of people in our community. And they have done, they do a tremendous job in that service that they provide. We've gone through some very difficult times as far as our budgeting is concerned and we've gotten through it based on the expertise of the people that I'm talking about and also the expertise of the elected officials that I've served with these thirty years. I've had the privilege of working in a courthouse that is a national monument. Not very many people get that privilege and I've appreciated that. We have a jewel here in this community that no one else has and I'm sure that future boards will take care of this jewel and continue to preserve it because it is a treasure. It is the only courthouse, public building, that is American designed and is not a copy of anything from Europe. That's what I was told when I went to Washington DC a few years back to receive that award for the county. But it truly has been an honor to serve you all as a citizen of this county and to accomplish some of the things that's been accomplished by past boards and this board. And I will never forget it, my family will never forget it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much. I think we have the results back, Mark?
Yes, we do. I also have Brian Keita, he's the district local systems engineer who has been helping us work our way through the alphabet soup.
Okay.
And appreciate all Brian's help in getting this done, led it quickly. On behalf of federal highway, he's here to observe the letting, make sure all the documents were correctly in place and that everything was done in terms of the requirements that we signed off on. The little bit for the project is KNL Construction with a total bid of two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars. I recommended a word of the bid to KNL.
Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
There is a second. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate it.
The late start date on this project again is January fifteenth. That's to allow time for the contractor to obtain some of the supplies that will have to be fabricated to extend the haul.
Good.
We will keep the, put on the accelerator and try and move these forward as quickly as we can.
I know you will. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, George.
All right. I'll later take a motion to adjourn the meeting, ladies and gentlemen.
I would just like to say, George, it's been an honor to serve with you. I'm sorry, I'm a little sad. I consider you a friend of mine, a colleague. I know you're a very private person. I think it took me about six years to really get to know you. But you are a nice person, but you're more than just a nice person. You've got things done for all kinds of people. You know, you're noted for your help with the disadvantaged, but you advocated for business right alongside of the disadvantaged. I saw you. You know, and you can be a nice person and you can be an influential nice person. You're an influential nice person. And I know your work isn't done. You're going to be out there advocating for people who don't have a voice.
Yes, I will.
You remind me of my mother. And I think that's why I get so sad because you sound like her. You, it was the values I was raised with and I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I mean, I've been wanting to say something, I just haven't been able to because I, I'm being a woman right now. I'm sorry. I'm going to play the female card and.
You're being a human being. That's not being a woman, you're being a human being.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Move to adjourn.
Okay. Are you on your break? You're just going to work?
I took special time because I said, you know, you can't get down here. Yeah, people can't get down here.
Yes, they can.
If they want to.
Yes, they can.
Wish all the best and I hope, I hope everything goes well with Stendford. I will see you in other things in the future. It's been a pleasure working with you in various capacities.
You've got a lot of years behind you.
We do. We do, I guess that speaks to something.
They do, they do.
Yeah, I think so. I think so. So, well, again, all the best for the future and I know things will work out well. We just, you know, we've both thrown up some. We just keep fighting. All right. All right, thanks, Ray.
We're going back here? Or you don't? Oh, she does, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll leave it here.
My name is George Fortin.
So what was your most memorable experience serving as chairman?
I think I've had, you know, a number of moments. You know, the county's done so much in thirty years, you know, been on the board. But I think most.